This time we'll call it Tuesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, more member or supervisors to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Stanis and myself, and the supervisors, we have Lisa Smith and Bjorn from the auditors office. Luanne Gopie, our administrative assistant. And Dave Driver is under the weather today, so we have pleasure of having Mike Plasming with us.
Good morning, Mike.
Morning. The first thing I have is a driveway for Leo Castello. It's in Bother Township, section thirty six, South Garyl Road. It says I have distance requirements.
Second, with a motion, second to approve the field entrance permit for Leo Castello. All those in favor? Hi, motion carry.
Okay, and next I have steel quotes for day later bridges for piling. Add three quotes, skyline steel was the lowest at seventy seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
We talked about one time about vines and refurbished, did we have an option to do that one time somewhere?
Piling?
Yeah, and then refurbish them or something, no?
We do do that with beams.
Okay.
The beams that we're using on two of the bridges this year, Schrader has some used beams that we're gonna buy from him. For like five or six thousand dollars, I think it is. So that's pretty cheap. You know, and then we have the other bridge, Mayberry Corners Bridge, we have those, we bought those beams several years ago and then set down the yard, so. Those, so.
And do you know like what kind of increases represents from a year or two years?
This is thirty four percent higher than it was last year. Make a motion to approve.
I would second. A motion in a second to approve the skyline steel bid of seventy seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. All those in favor? Hi, motion carry.
And that's all I have.
Yes, thanks, Mike. Do you want to do your business, Lisa?
Sure. So the more this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the twenty second and March twenty fourth, twenty twenty two board proceedings as read by auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers.
Motion in a second to approve publication of the minutes of the previous meeting, all those in favor? Hi, motion carry.
I also need a motion this morning to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants for the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and ninety three dollars and forty one cents.
Motion in a second to approve the claims. And that's more allowable amount.
So with that amount, there's seventy thousand in gravel and thirty thousand in salt that had come in, so there's a hundred thousand.
Yep.
Would put to good use.
Okay, all those in favor? Hi, hi, motion carry.
And I also need a motion to accept the resignation of Christina Tranel as the Jackson County zoning administrator and GIS specialist. Effective April twenty fourth, twenty twenty two.
On a motion, the resignation of Christina Tranel. All those in favor? Hi, motion carry.
That's all I have for the board. And get out.
Come back, go and come back when you look like him.
I wore my Chinese shoes today. I give a call, and he's like, well, I'll come in for that, and so he's like. Of course, that he's like, no, you go ahead with it, so. But he said if we need to be, we can find it later, um, do you guys have a printout of it?
Yes, we do.
I was still, I started down for it to put a, a signature line on the bottom.
I did have a question in here, can't remember.
This was something that was back in, where? I do have the section of the code. It gives us, of course, authorization or three thirty one, point five zero two, subsection one and. Six oh one. Three zero three. There's a section in here, of course, that gives the court controlled areas of the courthouse. And of course, the judicial district, that being the clerk's office and the areas or upper courthouse clerk's office and. Courtrooms here. Should they supervise that, of course?
I know I read it, but now I can't find it. Okay. But there was a timeframe that was in here, so that timeframe may change.
I mean.
It does, during, it does specifically, we just talked about the hours.
Sorry, five in the morning.
It says, general public, an art teacher shall be open to general public from eight thirty AM until four P.
I think when you change that for thirty, it's not quite right word.
That would be a discussion for later on this morning.
That was our regular operating hours before COVID.
Yeah.
That we should, the public is asking, when are we going back to regular hours?
I don't know, that's.
So they are looking at changing that then?
Yes.
Yep.
After the normal.
Maybe that's the only reason.
Great.
Here is that normal courthouse hours in that door is. We don't specify a time in here.
Right, yeah, just, yeah, we could just change that to.
I also would question under C, under the entrances, under C, it talks about emergency exits. I think that all is a game changer now with what the city of Kokona has done to Flat Street. And I also do not like the way that the wording on number two says the north and basement entrances may be used by the maintenance and the auditor's office when necessary. To carry out their official duties. I don't care for that wording when it comes to the downstairs basement, it's an emergency exit only.
Which one is this?
You talking about the ramp or the?
Ramp.
Or the?
I certainly agree with that, yeah.
Well, it says that it may be used by maintenance and the auditor's office when necessary to carry out their official duties. Well, that could be an everyday occurrence with maintenance.
Yep. And it could be left unlocked and that's.
And we don't want that. Right. So we do have all of our election equipment downstairs in the basement, but I think the ramp is dangerous.
Absolutely.
And I think.
Been named that way by the insurance, so.
I don't think we need to be using it, I think it needs to be an emergency exit only.
I agree.
Is that labeled emergency exit at this point, you know? So we talked one time of putting steps in there. You want to consider that again or? Or not, or just leave it? I mean, you could overly steps in it, just the way it is.
Yeah, I would agree with that, what about access of getting, like whatever, boil the equipment down there, and I mean, I know we hoisted. Rooms thing on their last round.
Yeah.
Over the side and drop it.
I don't, I don't imagine they use that ramp to wheel it down there anyway, couldn't hang on to it unless you had.
No, that'd be awful.
I guess we'd have to discuss that with maintenance and say, you know, because that. It either has to be changed per insurance policy to be up to snuff, or we just close it, you know, and.
We wheel all of our stuff from the basement up into the elevator across the top floor, up the. The left and out the southeast door. It's been easy, but.
You can't go out this door?
No entrance now.
The north door is, well, and now with. Well.
There's a light pole there now, isn't there? Maybe it's down this way.
Yeah, and then we gotta go down this, I mean, it's just, it's too dangerous. It's an easy way for someone to get hurt.
Put wheels on those steel racks.
They're great, I, you know, I mean, we're very happy to have them.
Yeah, at some point.
Yeah.
Good to have.
So, um. Because the first we seen this was last week, and I had read it, and of course, I know there were some time changes, so maybe we should.
We haven't had this policy for a long, long time, maybe we should look at it a little closer. I would suggest that we table it and take action next week so that we can look things over and see.
Everybody's opinion.
Things are the timeline there and the emergency exit only. At this point, anything else?
Do department heads need to weigh in?
Well, we can certainly give them copies of it and have them.
Well, I mean, they're a part of this building and they work here and work every day, I would say department head should have a. Be able to read it and have an opinion anyway.
Well, we'll distribute it and have them get back to us if there's anything that they deem as a problem, they'll have to.
Did you send it out to everybody?
No, gee, give it to me, I was just instructed to run it by chief deputy and Sarah Davenport. So, but that's a good idea, is it?
Did Sarah have any opinions on this?
Uh, she made some minor changes, uh, and made those, and she said that it's, it's soundest legally, so yeah, she signed up on. On that.
Well, I would make the most of the table this resolution until further input.
And you want to set to submit copies to all the department heads?
A month or so.
Oh, couple, no, a couple of weeks at the most.
Okay. Yeah, we don't want to forget about it. I would second.
You actually can have it on the agenda for next week, if you put a date on it, and we can still table it or pass it, well, if you don't have.
Well, if we send it out with a cover and note saying that we'd like them to review it as quick as possible so that we can get it into effect.
Yeah.
And it'll be on the next, we can say it's gonna be on next week's agenda.
Have your input by Friday or Monday.
Wasn't something said about Beth being using that last half hour to close her books and stuff? If that were the case, could she actually do that, if somebody came in at twenty after, could that be just put on the next day's thing instead of holding the books open till four thirty or is that?
Are you talking, you're talking about the changing of the courthouse hours?
Hours.
Is that on our?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, let's talk about that.
I believe she's going to come in.
She's gonna.
She was going to come in.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table action. And to submit copies of the. Security statement to the other offices in the courthouse. All those in favor? Thank you. So we'll have it on the agenda for next week, and if we're able to take action, we will. There's a holdup, we'll delay it another week.
I get, thank you.
Since it's a quarter after, are there any visitors or citizens, I don't see anybody that would be addressing the board, but. Well, Luanne, do you want to do your portion? Oh, maybe we should let. Did you say it was Arlene and?
There was some discussion that Arlene and Beth were.
Beth were gonna come.
We can call them real quickly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that on your agenda?
Yes, it is on the agenda to discuss.
At nine fifty, though.
Yes.
Oh.
I did send, yes, please, as just a point, I did send that a note out to all department heads to give, you know, any input.
Hey, Arlene, this is Luanne.
You want to come down and do your thing now? So I got a email from Tony over at.
Okay, we're running real fast.
I also had comment, as in the treasurer's office, Arlene, recorder's office. I talked to Sarah, you know, I talked to Sarah about it, so they, both ladies wanted to come in and be part of the discussion.
Does Tony want to come in too?
He did not indicate that he did, he was unaware of what the hours were because it's prior to.
They're getting ready to discuss courthouse hours, so we're gonna call Arlene, you want to?
He just, all right, know what it was, and I said, this is why we did it, and this is where we're going, potentially where we're going, and he was okay with it. Yeah.
Well, at least you got input.
Yeah, I did, I sent out an email and received some.
I seen that, yeah.
Morning.
Good morning.
Am I the only one showing up?
Beth is coming over.
We had recent, no, we're not.
No, we're not.
Winter's back, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, it's testing us.
That's not.
Very cold this morning. We know which direction it's going, we hope.
That's true. It can all get back. See, so there you go.
Sixty four and rainy.
I don't get, I'll take the rain.
Yeah.
It's time to get the long way.
Our neighbors had his running the other day.
Take the snowboard out.
That's mine, they did wrong already.
Good morning. I guess we're gonna just discuss the courthouse hours, and Lucy said that you both said that you would come over, and so we'll just hear you out.
Sure, sure, so, um, I will be, I guess. Feel like changing the courthouse hours is probably gonna affect our offices the most, since we see the public the most. I'm on board with going back to the original hours, I think. Four thirty is probably a better option for customers to get here after work or trying to make it. Four o'clock seems to be a little bit early for the public, I've heard complaints too, so. I'm on board with that, the only thing for my office would be that title transfers, that's the transaction that takes the longest. We can't have those coming in at four thirty, or my staff will be getting come time all the time, and we'll be back in the same boat that we were in before. So my fix for that, I guess, would be to stop title transfers at four fifteen. That way, we would get time to balance our drawers and do the cleaning like we normally do. We'd still keep the window open for registration renewals and tax payments. And we can take the paperwork for the title transfers and make sure that they've got it all correct, we just won't be processing it until the next day. And I know a lot of people have trouble with, well, I'm gonna have to make a second trip now, but we do have.
Mail it to them.
Well, we can mail it to them, but they, they have to pay for it, and we don't know what that payment is gonna be. So that's the whole holdup, which we, we can take payment over the phone, and we can take. We can send links now for them to pay with an e-check, which costs twenty five cents, so it's an online link they get through email. They can electronically pay, we can process it, and we can mail it to them, so there's options, more so now that we can not have them have to come back.
There's also credit card with a minimal fee too, is that correct?
The, the credit card payments, we can take over the phone, or we can have them pay online too. But they, they have a fee whether they're paying with card in office or online, it's the same amount. So two dollars for debit or two point two five percent for credit. Either way, and that's an option too.
So when you process, after you process this. And you're gonna send it to them, you've got to have pay, you require a payment before you send it, is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, you can't send it to them and say, hey, you owe this.
No, right, yes, we can't, no, they have to pay for the transaction of any kind.
Before you mail it out.
We will mail anything to them, registration renewal, anything has.
And I guess that sounds reasonable to me not to take it after four fifteen, and you can still do the paperwork?
Yeah.
Do you see a problem?
I think it would be as easy as just posting signs. Arlene and I talked, she's already been running her office that way at four o'clock, right?
Since oh six, we were doing it that way, we cut off all transactions at four o'clock.
And you don't hear.
It has never been a problem.
Okay.
No. And of course, if they come in, like even when you were closed at four, we left our door open, if someone's in the courthouse and they want to do a transaction, they come in, and it's the same way. They mail it to them, or I've even dropped it off after work at their house, if it's something they need right away the next day. And unlike her, we know what the fees will be, so they just leave a check or the charge or the cash or whatever, and then we'll mail it or whatever. So, and as far as we're concerned, we do need time to clean, so that's another reason why we need to stop transactions at a certain time. Because we have the public access terminals and we have the back counter that people are in and out all the time, so. And we're, again, thankful for the, the glass. Because Amy will clean the front counter at night, and it's kind of funny, but she'll lift up her towel, and we clean every single night, and it's just black. And you wouldn't think that. And even the glass, the specs that get on that glass. And to think you're like this during the day without the glass, so anyway, we're thankful for that, but I'm all for the four thirty. We need to offer as much customer service as we can, so, and we've always done it that way, as far as cutting off transactions, but still bringing stuff in.
I appreciate that you're, you know.
And as far as you're opening at eight o'clock, then is that what you're thinking too?
Well, that was the normal hours, is that correct?
The doors would open, or do you want office hours?
I would say it used to be.
Office hours used to be eight thirty to four thirty.
Yeah, so the doors would open at eight, correct? So again, security has a role in this, so security would have to be here at eight, if the doors are open at eight.
I believe he was.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I think the only offices, correct me if I'm wrong, that open at eight are engineers, clerk of court, and Renee, county attorney. County attorney, so there, I mean, there are.
I, I, I would say that courthouse doors should open at eight, whoever's office normally weren't open till eight thirty is, go back to normal hour, I guess.
Yeah, well, and whenever we walk in, the doors unlock, the lights are on, there's a lot of times people follow us in. So we're just, as soon as we're there, we're ready to take customers.
And it won't really matter much for our office, because our gate is closed, and when we're ready to open, we open. So if there's people waiting in the hallway, that's not gonna matter, you know?
Well, you know, as funny as it sounds, like.
Yeah, okay.
Eight o'clock, and there's people standing at the door.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd say that happens a lot.
Well, people have to get to work, we understand that.
At eight thirty, it was twenty, it was twenty five after you.
Yeah, we'll just make a few little changes and make it work.
Okay. Appreciate your input, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was Luanne's business, is she coming back up or?
Ian.
We'll let you.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, the next thing I have in the calendar after this meeting is Wednesday, March thirtieth, at eleven AM, for the children's advisory committee by Zoom for Jack. Thursday, March thirty first, at one PM, is an early childhood Iowa site visit to Delwood for Jack. And at two thirty, on that afternoon, is another early childhood site visit that will be in Bellevue, also for Jack. Monday, April fourth, at ten AM, is the Mississippi Valley Fiscal TA Session by Zoom for Jack. At one o'clock, he has an early childhood site visit to Clinton. And at three o'clock is a regional governing board special meeting in Davenport or by Zoom, also for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April fifth, at nine AM. And that afternoon at one thirty is a US Department of Labor local area listening session by Webex for Jack.
I'm thinking to.
All of these pertaining to. When the child was alive.
We have to make in-house visits to all the preschools and daycares.
Was that normal for like this time of year?
Yeah, it's before the contract renewals with Jerry. And we have to submit a report to the state. Our visits and that they were on, all in compliance with all of the various rules and regulations. So, but we officially have to set the hours back to the normal, which. We've heard what they've suggested, open the doors at eight, offices, some will open at eight, some will open at eight thirty, and we'll go until four thirty. That, that's the motion is to go back to the original or go with. I would second that. Any further discussion? When do we start? Okay, what did you think?
Starting when?
I would say tomorrow.
And we can make it back immediately.
All those in favor? All right, I, motion carry.
That means it stays open till four thirty today.
They're totally there anyway.
Right here. Actually, I could smart night, because we need twenty four hours notice, so Bjorn will make that change.
Okay.
Yeah. So just make sure the courthouse doors will unlock at eight AM and lock at four thirty PM.
And we do have to please call Sarah, she said she is available.
I'm going to do that retreat too.
So is somebody coming over while we meet with Matt and Tricia?
Hi, Sarah, are you ready to come down? Okay, thanks.
I didn't know if that question would have to call away.
Sure.
Tricia, did you see that resolution? You said to me, you're showing. It wasn't to Shelley when she asked for it, and then I said it to you when I'm talking to you on phone.
When you and Tricia can come up, then we'll go from there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, I would. And I never saw it. I get it for Shelley, she's got.
Okay.
Okay, we're joined by Matt Beck and Tricia Wagner from ECIA to discuss the Leisure Lake Pavilion. So. Yeah, Sarah is coming.
I know we had, you know, touch base back and forth a little bit about some changes, and we had some. Found documents and changed.
Yeah, I accidentally went to one. Yeah, it wasn't a misprint, it was just the wrong.
Say for, that's just a template or what?
Well, they are, I mean.
Yeah.
These can move for me.
Okay, Sarah's here now, so whoever wants to start can start.
Okay, so I guess the first thing we wanted to do was get the resolutions assigned for both the project and the CDH and CDHNA that we were covered during the public hearing.
Do we have resolution numbers or resolutions?
You know what, Shelley didn't print those out for you, did she?
I have, I don't have. So what, I don't know which one we're talking about first, I guess.
So the first one is resolution number eight eighty one. It is a resolution approving the community development block grant coronavirus for the Jackson County Leisure Lake Public Facilities Public Spaces Project. One of the happy two.
No, as long as it's the same, we don't need it reprinted.
No, no.
You have.
So that's the first one that I have for today, is that motion is resolution number eight eighty one dash zero three dash twenty nine dash twenty twenty two.
Okay, could you just explain it briefly?
For, so for the project, we're going to be expanding the community center to add on some additional space for their. Social activities, revamping their kitchen and their. social activities, uh, revamping their kitchen and their, um, bathrooms so that they're, you know, accessible and all that good stuff. Um, essentially, the, the original building now is going to be primarily for storage, um, and a workshop, but then it also is going to have the overhead door so that that will be able to give them some space to have open air type of events while, you know, they still have access to a building. The, the main space is gonna, you know, be much larger than it is now because what they have is not big enough to social distance and they cannot use all of the space for their for now, for their, um, their primary area to go to during storms. During storm shelters, until they're able to do their.
Does the new facility have a basement then?
No. It, it went back and forth and it was at one point going to have them, but not.
Would it be?
Because of the cost.
Would you have the specs for the basement part? Would it be good to bid both of them and see where they come in?
Um, I don't know that we can bid for something that we don't have approved by, by the state to do for the grant. I feel like, I don't know, does that?
It changes the scope too much, but. I guess if you bid it both ways and it comes in like, you know.
Yeah.
You could always ask. Cause really bidding, it probably isn't, it's not hard to probably throw a line item to bid a.
Full basement.
Put it in a wall, no. To me, that is more than a storm shelter than a boat ground, but.
For sure, for sure. But like I said, this is really, um, right now what they have is they're only storm shelter, sort of, and.
I don't know anything right now.
Yeah.
No, it's like building this, nothing's happening.
Building that was there is gone, and so that's.
Well, that was just a roof.
Yeah, yeah, that was just a roof. So, the resolution that I have, or the paper I have in front of me, is still says twenty percent off.
They didn't reprint, but they had already printed mine. So it talks about now seventeen percent. Originally, Property Owners Association will pledge a minimum of seventeen percent of.
That's the first one you just gave, correct?
Eighty-one.
Cause the, yeah, cause you have one packet, seventy.
You should have taken a packet. So the twenty was because I wanted you to take one packet and pass it on over. So there's four pages.
I got my packet. Who that goes to. But each one of you get one, or one of the packets, one of the packets is missing both of them.
Well, I have eighty-two, eighty-three, and eighty-four.
You need eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, and eighty-four. There should be four resolutions.
I do not have eighty-one.
Mike, do you have an extra eighty-one?
No, I give it to, I just give it to you.
No, you're dating eighty-two unless there's something on that. You have eighty-one?
Yeah. And then show an extra one, no? I've got four of them.
I have four of them, but I have eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-five.
Eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, and eighty-four.
There can't be, there can't be.
It says thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and I do know my number.
I thought you meant eight eighty. No, as I said, the resolution numbers start on page thirty-two is eight eighty-one. Page thirty-three is eight eighty-two. Page eighty, thirty-four is eight eighty-three.
I got that, and I have eight eighty-four. But I was going by the number up in the corner that somebody wrote.
I wrote those as a page number for my minutes.
So we're all on the same page, just.
Hail Mary.
So, I guess the seventeen percent, now that it's changed to seventeen, it's twenty that we had originally in there. Does, is that required to have X, or leisure lake required to have X amount of change? Seventeen is a minimum? No?
There, no, they didn't give us a set amount. It's really just to get them to, the state won't pay for the full amount of the project.
Right.
They're asking for a local preparation, and there was no set amount.
I'm, I'm just, the only reason I asked Trisha is because if it is twenty a minimum, are we responsible for the other three?
No, no, and there's no requirement.
That's all I meant.
So we're just explaining that they're providing seventy-two thousand, that they've done, you know, they raised in fundraisers and that equates to seventeen percent of the budget, so.
There it's been.
So can we approve all of these? Individually, I will start with eighty-one, motion to approve. I would say, motion and a second to approve resolution eight eight one dash zero three dashed twenty-nine dash twenty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. Now we move to eight eight two dash oh three dash two nine dash twenty-two. A resolution approving the Jackson County Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment.
And basically this says.
That was, that was the list of the improvements and the, I hear, I'll just even grab it out here. That we read through for the public hearing that goes through all of the, there's eleven under the community development housing needs for LMI persons talking about things like continuous progress for housing rehabilitation. Um, undertake efforts, this was, this was the one added to this project. Undertake efforts to increase recreational opportunities and safe public gathering spaces of LMI citizens. And then we also had then the other community development housing needs, which is essentially the same thing as the first eleven, and then it talks about the plan of potential activities to address housing and community. And that, um, just talks about how you're basically going to public funding, so talking about applying to CDBG CDB funds for extension of public facilities.
Okay, is it also talk about the application that you're going through ECIA and the fee that's associated with that?
No.
No, which one does that?
That's the, um.
Administration.
Yes, thank you.
Which is part of the next resolution.
That's the next one, yeah. Yeah, this was the public, this was part of the public hearing along with the, the first one we just approved with those nine questions.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution, resolution eighty-two zero three two-nine twenty-two.
The motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
Wait a minute. I'd like you to stay in order because the next thing on the agenda then is the subrecipient agreement.
And that is eight eight three oh three.
No, that is not my resolution. The, uh, subrecip, what I need is a motion to approve and authorize chair signature on the subrecipient agreement for the twenty-twenty-two community block grant hyphen C V program between Jackson County and Leisure Lake Property Owners Association. This is just an agreement.
That's just, and leisure making is a subrecip.
But this says a resolution of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors approving the subrecipient agreement for twenty-twenty-two CDBG grant and Leisure Lake Property Owners Association.
So, in, in the agenda is what I took off, is the third action is discussion of possible action to approve the subrecipient agreement. And then the next one says it's a resolution.
Okay, so we do this first and then go to the resolution?
That's what I, I mean, is that what you need to do? That's what the agenda's saying.
Okay.
Basically, just if you wanna, you know, make sure you don't have questions on this, and then approve the. Sign it, sign it, and then push it around.
Is, is that the one where it says that your fee was the fee is?
The next one.
No, that's.
This is the eight.
Always the next one.
This is the eight page, it's an eight-page agreement, it's titled.
I read that online, but I don't know that I have that in front of me.
Yeah, the first one is subrecip.
It's an eight-page agreement. And so then we put it into resolution form, and this will also need chair signature.
Well, this subrecip.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would say.
In motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, now keeping us on our straight and narrow.
Now eight eighty-three.
Now we go to eight eighty-three dash oh three dash twenty-nine dash twenty-two.
And you do have a brief explanation.
Is that, are you talking about the resolution?
Yeah.
Yep, so, yep, all that is, is explaining that you're going to approve the motion to approve the resolution.
The question of the fee was only if the, is included in the grant application.
Oh, are we talking about the, are we talking about the application? I mean, the.
No, we're still, we're, we're approving the subrecipient.
Correct.
You said that was the next one, that I already did another one.
You're super anxious to talk about that.
So this is, this is basically a resolution to approve what you just approved.
Yeah.
They wanted it in resolution.
So moved.
To keep everybody happy, we have a resolution. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
Hey, Mike, what do you want to talk about?
Is it the next one?
It's the next one. This is where.
I have no idea.
You need to approve the, the ECIA administrative contract.
My question is, is the twenty thousand dollar fee included in the grant funding or in, in the seventeen percent? Or is there somebody still liable for that?
It's included in the grant, I think, for this one, let me look at how I wrote that. I think.
We don't need to think, we need to know.
No, I'm just thinking back. Yeah, and I.
I mean, Sarah certainly stated to us in her comments that we were not liable for.
Yeah, no, you're not, you're not liable for any.
The other thing that she was concerned about was signing some documents that weren't filled in. And I agree with, usually on these C V Gs, we do have a contract number, but the state is pushing us to get these approved, so it's kind of backwards from what we're used to as well, and we kind of question that as well because usually we get a contract in hand, and then we come back and say, hey, Leisure Lake received this grant, here's contract number, here's the administration number, but they're trying to save time, just because time is.
Government trying to save time?
You should be talking about same government I'm talking about, or?
Shelley has a comment.
When I did the resolutions, I took the contract number line, that phrase out of the resolution. So it does not reference a contract number in the resolution.
Okay, so we don't have a contract number.
And that was at my advice, because if you're gonna have a resolution in the resolution book, you don't want links in it, because you can't go back later and fill it in. You have to do a new.
Let's do that later, that you have to amend the resolution, which. Okay, now we're talking about this one. I don't have any further questions.
So this is just approving the contract.
Motion to approve the contract, I would say. A motion and a second to approve the contract and resolution eight eight four zero three dash two nine dash twenty-two.
So we don't know. You're only approving the contract.
Okay.
Because then the next thing we're going to do is the resolution.
Ah, you're getting me confused.
I know.
All those in favor of the contract? Aye, motion carry. Now the resolution.
I'll make a resolution. As presented. Eight eight four zero three two nine twenty-two.
Excellent.
Second, we have a motion in a second. I'm gonna just keep my mouth shut. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry. Hallelujah.
That's it.
We got them all covered.
That's it?
Thank you.
We do appreciate your effort and your input in on, on this, you know.
You're welcome.
I think it's a good thing for that community. Still have to figure that it's overblown, but.
Yes.
I think it's a lot of money for the facility that they're getting canceled on.
I did sound we're gonna recess.
That's why I'd like to see the one bid with the.
Okay, going back to your agenda, Lisa, um, where we accepted the resignation of Christina Trenal. Um, as a part of that, did we indicate going out for advertising for the position internally and externally at the same time?
Um, I would suggest calling Becky down. I did visit with her this morning. The agenda that I sent out last night, obviously to you, did include some extra verbiage. And, um, I've been visiting with Becky this morning. She believes that we need to have, um, a work session.
Okay.
So if you wanna, I mean, we can discuss that with her, um, later on today when she sort of come in and talk about secondary roads. We can also discuss that if you'd like, but she wanted me to take that off, um, the motion.
Okay, so we'll deal with her after a while.
Yeah, well, but David's not here, so.
I think the work session is still on, though.
Yeah, work session is still on, but David won't be here.
Right, so I mean, if, you know, what time is Lynn coming in?
Ten o'clock, it's supposed to be.
I mean, I guess that's your option is, are you doing Becky in open session or in work session?
Obviously, I don't see Becky here. The ten thirty and thirty with David, but David won't be here, so.
I have so good with work session, because.
Yeah, on personal items, matters.
Anyone who can come to the work session.
Yeah.
Well, how long is it gonna take her?
I wouldn't think that long, I don't know. I mean, we can call her down and we can discuss quickly.
We'll recess and we'll call her and see what she thinks, if she wants to come down now, or if she wants to come down after we're done with Lynn Boggs, we can call Lynn and after come over. This time we'll reconvene, and we've been joined by Lynn Boggs, our Jackson County Coordinator of Services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. So, um, I'm here to report on the most recent Regional Government Board meeting, which is actually a week ago yesterday. I wasn't available last Tuesday to come. Um, but, uh, the fiscal report by the fiscal agent David Farmer was given, and our fund balance as of the end of February is still at about seventy-eight percent. So if you remember, this is the amount that at the end of the fiscal year, by June thirtieth, the goal would be to have it at less than forty percent, otherwise we will have some, um, reconciliation with our payments from the state for the next fiscal year for the, a couple of quarters. Again, there are still some claims that are waiting to be paid, but contracts need to be signed for Robert Young and some vendors. So there is some money that is waiting, um, for payment. There is, on Monday, the other thing the governing board did, one of the other things they did was approve the agreement between, um, life connections and the region for the payment, um, towards their ability to continue respite services by relocating from the house they're currently in behind Genesis to a different location.
So the money for that.
Is still to be spent.
Okay.
Three hundred thousand. Likewise, there were two other recipients of awards through their request for proposal for peer support services, M C S A out of Muscatine, which runs the homeless shelter and some respite, um, drop-in center services, and then also beer French Center. So I don't believe those claims are coming yet either for what they requested and were approved for funding for, so those are examples of fairly large amounts that should be paid. Uh, we're also in the process of looking at doing a request for proposal for what's called therapeutic classrooms.
To, I think that sounds wonderful.
Yeah, it's really encouraging, and this would be one-time funding again, available, and we should be able to encumber it or have it committed for next fiscal year as well, if we don't actually get it spent out of our account by June thirtieth. The board, governing board will be meeting on this next Monday to talk more about this request, but uh, the management team went to Clinton to visit a therapeutic classroom at one of the elementary schools. The state had given awards to, I believe, four different districts uh, throughout the state for this, and this kind of came about in a discussion at a governing board meeting when, um, the question was put out, there was anything that the schools needed or the education system needed, and the board member Aaron Rome from Mississippi Bend, the E D A, was there, and I believe he's the one who planted kind of the, the idea that a therapeutic classroom funding would be beneficial, so I do anticipate that that will move forward, but it is the governing board's decision next Monday if they want to issue an R F P for that, so.
So, is that something, when you say a therapeutic classroom, is that something a special room, or so many times a week, do they bring somebody in to do it?
It's, it's a.
I take it?
A room generally that's designated by the school district for, um, they will identify a grade or an age of student for students that have special needs and maybe some behavioral disorders so that they can learn how to control their emotions and have appropriate behaviors in addition to an academic component. But because of the nature of some of the needs of the students or special, um, types of, um, materials and information. Materials and information that the classroom needs to be able to therapeutically work with these kids to manage their behaviors. They work closely with the classroom teacher as well and they have the students integrated into their normal classroom as much as possible.
So the, there, there's a special part of them brought in, it's not somebody that's hired by the.
Um, it is an employee of the school district who is put in this position to be the instructor for a therapeutic. And the R F P would not pay for the cost of salaries or any of the ongoing expenses. It would be more training that would need to be for that teacher in that classroom, ongoing support for that teacher. And the materials that would be needed to set up this kind of facility, this kind of classroom within a building.
And this is for all the school systems.
Will have an opportunity to apply. And we'll see, you know, not all districts will likely pursue this. Because it does require them to have personnel that could be available to move into this kind of specialized type setting.
And you gotta have the room for it.
And you have to have space for it.
Be using your gym for a cafeteria now and you can't. Stage for a classroom and.
Right. Yeah, so there are some challenges to some of the schools, even if they would want to pursue it, whether or not they could logistically do it. And the governing board will hear more about this from Erin on, on Monday.
So when you talked about the fund balance and you talked about the programs and the, and the ensuing invoices that you have coming. What's your projection or what's the projection of the fund balance percentage after this is paid?
I would say that David hasn't really given us that information yet. He hasn't taken all the outstanding claims, if you will, invoices and put them into the budget to see what the actual projections.
And the incurred money that.
And the incurred money.
So June thirtieth is coming quicker than later.
Yeah, yeah, the timeline for this request for a proposal for the therapeutic classrooms is pretty tight.
Is there any projection that they may extend that? So then what happens to the excess?
So what happens for regions that end fiscal year twenty-two with more than forty percent in their fund balance? When all that information is fed into the D O M, Department of Management from the counties and from the region. Department of Management will take a look at it and see. How much a region in dollar amount is over the forty percent, whatever that threshold is. When the state sends out the quarterly payments, probably the. Quarterly payment that would be sent out for January of twenty twenty-three. And potentially if it would take more than one quarterly payment. It could be the second, the following payment for April first of twenty twenty-three. The money, the, the state would withhold payment to the region.
They would make you use up what you have in your balance instead of submitting a check to us.
So you don't actually lose it, but you might not gain some other funding.
Yeah, well, because they aren't doing what they said they do to pay for it. It should come back to the numbers in my mind.
Yeah, and that is right, and that is not the way, because you know that the language is written into code. So that's why it's such a critical piece because, yeah, you're, you're using your own money into that fiscal year. And the state's payment to that region is reduced.
I, I had the feeling that we knew this was coming or we seen this coming years ago. But again, you just wanna go out and spend.
We couldn't change the levy. Oh, we did drop it one time.
We don't, we just don't wanna go spend money to spend money either, that's.
Right, in.
It's gotta be sustainable projects or whatever.
So that's why some of these projects we've done have been one-time funding. The one for the peer support programs and this therapeutic classroom, they're just one-time funding. So that the agencies are responsible for sustaining the programs. Beyond the startup cost or whatever the funding's being used for. The other thing that's happened is our expenditures have gone down. For example, even in our county, our expenditures are less than what we had budgeted. And some of that is because we don't have, we have one person right now in a residential care facility. And at one time we might have had four or five. That too is following the, the guidance and the direction all the way from the federal government down to the state in terms of having people. Reside in homes closest to what resembles a household. Right.
You know, I, I hear all that, but then again, well, a lot of our resources and funding. Goes to our jail system because they're having all kinds of problems. So can we use some type of that?
We use something for the jail.
I mean, they got, every other day they got.
And so the region is working to provide services to the jails and to train the jailers and. Staff at the, at the, in the law enforcement to provide direction as to what they need to do.
So the region's crisis system. And maybe sometime that would be interesting for you to have just a little explanation of the continuum of care that's available. Similar to what was presented Thursday out at the National Interpretative Center to, we had about thirty people in attendance. There were about twenty-two people that were either law enforcement or their stakeholders in the community. And that's exactly what they did was they discussed what the crisis system is making itself available to Jackson County as well as the other four counties in the region. So using the jail as an example, mobile crisis outreach, the jail has called mobile crisis outreach on several occasions. Because they might have an inmate there that is. Having some mental health concerns or even expressing some suicidal comments. And so mobile crisis can come physically to the jail and meet with that inmate and then develop a plan and try to. Reduce the significance, the acuteness of that crisis and also develop a plan. To what resources are available to that person after they get out of jail. And there is a myriad of community care coordinators that are either in place currently or are going to be added once contracts are signed. One of them is a jail coordinator and that's a person that would be shared between Clinton and Jackson County. Because of the volume here does not support a full-time position, but that position would work with inmates in the two jails in these two counties. And make sure that as they're getting ready to be released from jail, if they need outpatient appointments, if they have housing concerns. Medicaid application submitted to get back on Medicaid funding, but there is that community care coordinator. To kind of work with that inmate as they leave the jail system. Once they get back to the community, have supports they need and supports that also might hopefully deter some of their criminal activity.
That's where the issue lies because most of the time our law enforcement encounter these situations before. Your facilities encountering, it comes after the fact. Well, they're having, they're either in crisis or they, they're shortly thereof and it, it, the call comes into law enforcement.
And I, I would certainly agree with that prior to January of two thousand sixteen. Now, six to, since two thousand and sixteen is one, the crisis system and the contract was established between the region and the Robert Young Center. And all of these services have become available. So in addition to what I just described as available to the jail, that's available to the general public. That's available to the community. Law enforcement can call. And ask for a mobile crisis team to come out and work with somebody that they had received a call on to respond to, and they do. That was a part of what was also trained on Thursday again was a reminder that the system is there. This is the number that you call. Law enforcement, many of them carry business cards for the crisis line number. And hand them out to people out in the community, either when they're responding to a call or when somebody approaches them and says, hey, I got my family member, my friend. Whoever that's doing this, that and the other thing and they need some help, how do I get help? So we've also, the region has also entered into a contract with TV and media to. Again, try and saturate the media, I would, is hopefully what we're gonna see. With a reminder to everybody that these services are out there at no cost. You don't have to meet any eligibility criteria to call the crisis line, to ask for mobile crisis to come out. To go to the hospital, if you're at the hospital E D and they wanna telehealth you into a licensed mental health professional to help the E D doctor. Try and understand more clearly what the nature of the crisis is and what's a recommended treatment. Does the person need hospitalization? Can they be released home? Should they go to some of the other services that are available through the crisis system? So, and that, those are all expensive programs and those are programs that quite frankly, Jackson County, standing alone as a county, would never have been able to implement. Because they are twenty-four seven. And they come with a high price tag because they require your staff to be available twenty-four seven. Right now, the mobile crisis teams are coming to Jackson County out of Davenport. If we see a higher demand in the northern parts of, of the region, so likely that would be Clinton and Jackson. The potential might be there to add another team that would fit, be physically dispatched more living close, close, more closely to these two counties. Yeah, something like that.
You know, I mean, there's certainly, the training, the exposure to this is certainly what needs to be done.
Well, and it has been done.
I, I've been to some of them and I agree a hundred percent, but they get people to, yeah.
Right, uh, we only pay attention that informa, to that information when we're in crisis and we don't always have it at our fingertips when we're in crisis. And that's why the more, uh, public servants that we can get familiar with what's available, that will help get the information out.
And that's why the, 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 the committee made the investment with Gary Mativa to get the story out. Um, we need people to know how they can access it and what's available. And that's what he's helping us to.
Yeah, and he, his target population is all ages. School-aged children, college-aged people, adults and older adults. So at, at the end of the year, we hopefully will be able to look back and say. You know, we really did cover all the populations that live in our, our five counties. The other thing along that line that's coming is April twentieth to the twenty-second is when. Solution Point Plus or Jesse and Joe, the two officers that some of you saw at Fall School, I believe. They will be coming, they will be in the region for those three days. They will be touring some facilities, meeting with some of the stakeholders. And doing an assessment of what are the training needs, where are the gaps that are needed? And then in turn, um, it's likely that they will be contracted with. Again, it's a buck governing board decision, what we will actually move forward with. But the idea is that then they would develop a plan to address some of those training needs and whatever those other needs are. With public servants and emergency response personnel.
Well, they certainly had some interesting. Stories.
Very good.
Situations, yeah, I mean, they can certainly improve. Again, the training side of it to.
Right, and those are the two guys that will physically be here in April, from what I understand. Yes, that comes on this one too and any, any commitment for contracting. Uh, they do have a proposal that they had provided to the region for anywhere from one, two or three years in length in terms of what trains would be available. Well, we can encounter the dollars if there's a contract.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
This la, yesterday or last night, even Channel Six News had a real nice program on the round the house or the round the house.
Oh, did they?
They showed the house and they showed the couple of residents that were there and one of the residents actually got hired on there. To, to help and, yeah, four bedroom, two and a half bath, I believe. Yeah, they had a nice article or a nice.
Yeah, I'll have to pull that up.
A lot of the people that, that work for Todd. Have gone through the process. I mean, they've been there.
They've either been there, the one thing they all that have had is their own personal experiences with mental health issues. Because it is staffed completely by people, in, in my world, what they say, with lived experience. Meaning they've dealt with their own personal dilemmas with mental health concerns and possibly substance abuse in coordination with that. It is the only, still the only respite house in the state of Iowa that is run solely by peers. There is no, no professionally trained by their career person that's overseeing the program. Or providing any of the direct service to the people that stay there.
Interesting.
Yeah, so.
Amazing that somebody don't have, show a regulation and say you have to have a license and you have.
Well, the concept, the. The downside to not having that clinical component or attachment is it does preclude them at this point in time. From billing Medicaid for their services. Because it's not considered a medical program because there is no one there with credentials with initials. So nevertheless, um, they found ways to sustain it and there, you will see. That concept of peer support used in many, many different areas. There was just a story on the radio about nurses, medical providers through COVID that have developed their own peer support network. Because of, um, people in their profession committing suicide or being suicidal. It's called don't clock out. Kind of an interesting, but yeah, so that idea of a peer helping somebody else in the cri, similar kind of crisis is a very popular concept right now.
Well, yeah, I mean, the way the news and everybody just tells the story, we get to see what that's gonna be.
I know there's one I saw that it was like normally you might see two or three people die within a week and this one nurse had been on staff in three days. I think she lost thirteen or fourteen people.
Yeah.
I mean, that's hard to deal with.
Yeah, exactly. The other thing I would mention is we are obviously getting closer to the July first date. When all expenses experienced by counties on behalf of mental health will become reimbursed by the region. And so there is a memorandum of understanding that has been developed and I think it's about ready to be sent to the county attorneys in the five counties for their review. It is basically just M O U indicating the relationship between each respective county in the region. And the region itself in terms of getting reimbursement for, um, costs associated. That will be paid by Jackson County out of the general fund, but be reimbursed from the region's fiscal agent fund. So that should be coming down the pike. And then the other thing, and Jack, I had to leave the meeting early last week, but I believe there was discussion about trying to schedule. A meeting of all the members of the board supervisors.
Gonna try to have it the first part of May.
Yeah, so I think Lori's gonna be sending out yesterday, she said she was gonna send out a journal pool with some proposed dates and times. For the board members to respond and at that point, and I, there will invite auditor's office staff, budget staff as well. And then I think one of the things that they'll be doing is just a review of how this process, they anticipate this process is gonna work. So. That was what I had. Anything else that I missed, Jack?
I don't think so.
Any questions?
I just would say, I was sorry I was late last week.
Oh.
But I couldn't, I was up dealing with the homeless and housing and Dubuque.
Yeah.
Um, after our, um, R P A meeting. But I was, I was really pleased when I got there and, cause I thought, well, I'll drive by and if there's any, any cars there. And I was coming down the highway, I thought, yeah, there are cars. Yeah, so I did pull in and, and so I was able to be there for about a half hour, but, um, lots of law enforcement, lots of people. I was really impressed with the turnout and I was extremely impressed with the questions they asked.
Yeah, I was too. Um, the participation from the audience was really insightful and very, um, they were obviously informed and interested. Based on their questions. So, yeah, thanks. I, I think everybody, I heard favorable comments afterwards that it was worth their time to have been there. And that they do feel that there are some opportunities, that they have some options to refer to, so. Yep.
I thought it was well done, what I saw and I didn't see the best part probably, but.
Oh.
I was, I was really pleased with what I saw and, and with the participation.
Yeah, we had good, good representation, not only from law enforcement, but the hospital and some of the agencies and, um, things like that. So it was good cross-representation.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good day.
Thanks, you too.
Stay warm. Okay. Thing else to come before the board today? We did have our, um. E C I eye meeting yesterday and we're in the process, as I said earlier, of visiting the preschools and daycares. And we're also in the process of re-contracting with our providers of services. And one of the things that we had the, um, I smiles representative there yesterday. And, um, she was talking about going into the schools and the preschools and doing the, the fluoride and, and training and stuff. But unfortunately, we don't have a dentist in Jackson County that will see these students that have issues. Um, and there's only two in Clinton County that will. issues. Um, and there's only two in Clinton County that will take them on um as as patients and um, you know, that really kind of bothers me. But they said, and 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 she said that the the main reason is that the reimbursements to dentists is almost non-existent. Um, it's, and they have to be eligible for Medicaid as a family. And so, but a lot ended and then she showed these pictures of these kids that every tooth in their mouth was rotten. And they would, they had to have medical and that had to be done in hospital rather than just in a dental office to to repair these teeth. There's so many things that are available to families and people that it's unfortunate that some of them don't take advantage of it. But that was, that was really interesting yesterday.
No, Lacy does two or three times a year. She'll book a whole Saturday for veterans for your charge. Through Aspen Down.
So.
Children's one is different than.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, she's not, that's not what she does with the kids, but.
And then we had a workforce meeting last night. Um, if I don't like to do it, but I, my meeting in Davenport or in into it got over at um five after five and my meeting in in Muscatine started at five. So I sat there and programmed in my car before I took off and then I just sent my iPad off to the side so I could at least listen to what was going on. But um, we had a lot of stuff that they were talking about and things that um they're gonna be doing, so really trying to come up with some plans to help people become employed. So saddest part is they they keep saying that people are not coming to the centers for assistance. And that's really sad because there's so such a need for workers and people just are not, are not applying. So and I I haven't heard, um, they're still coming to Macoka uh an afternoon or a day of I think it's on a Monday or Tuesday, they are at the Heycap Building. So, and I haven't heard how responsive people have been to that.
So is that on the radio or in the paper?
It has been on the radio. It's been in the paper.
So.
But probably not as often as it should be.
So.
Other than that, um.
Waste Authority, we had a meeting and of course, you know, we've probably seen in the paper or heard on the AMQ. Might get this wrong, but I believe it shut down April fourth.
Yeah.
And that's when the landfills closed, so and uh they um do have a couple of good applications for um the gentleman that's retiring out there. So Becky and Ryan were lining up interviews for that uh after Becky's return and um, they talked about ordering a truck, a semi tractor for the two thousand and six unit that we have. And they said, maybe you get it in December.
It's crazy.
So that's how that goes.
I did hear they're catching up on the shipping and container ships. It was like a hundred were backed up and now we down about.
Yeah, I see what too. They dumped it over in the ocean.
With that being said, is there any other business to come before our meeting today?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Put a motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
I.
I, motion carried. Meeting is adjourned.